Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers so much for a fun-filled, yet affordable, family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with ramp and dock, free rowboats and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. You'll enjoy our attractive waterfront and beachside accommodations. So visit us online at gogreenharbor.com.
We're back into public session. Please join us in saving the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up this evening is our annual shellfish management closures. Chuck Martinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The members of the board, Chuck Martinson, Acting Director of the Department of Natural Resources. I'll be brief in the interest of saving some time this evening. What I normally do with these, and if it's all right with members of the board, is I like to go through the changes that are changes from last year. Regulations are relatively boilerplate. So what I'd like to do, if that is well with everyone, is go to the changes. The first one is going to be in this packet. If you go to SC 11, which is Great Pond, which should be on the, I believe, the fifth page. What I'm proposing we do is move the opening of Great Pond from last year, which we did was December 1st to November 15th. This will allow the area to be open for two extra weeks for shellfishing. I was approached by one of our commercial shellfishmen who subsequently wrote a letter asking for this area to be opened up a little bit earlier because of the number of shellfish in there were relatively decent amount of shellfish that were in the area that they'd like more of an opportunity to fish a little bit earlier in the year. So that would be the first change. The second change would be SC 12, which would be Green Pond. And the proposal on that is to go from a November 1st opening to a December 15th opening. Because we'll be moving forward on the Great Pond, we would propose pushing that back a little bit to give that area a little bit more of a rest. And then the last change from last year's would be it's SC 13.2 and it's for Born's Pond and it's basically July, the date in July, which is going to be July 10th. We're proposing a shellfish day to allow family members to come down and try shellfishing without having to purchase a license. It'll be between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. And we'll do this in conjunction with the Falmouth Summer Camp, with the Recreation Camp. We've done this other years. It's usually very well attended by families and children. So we'll go ahead and move forward with that. Again, those are the changes. The other regulations are similar, actually the same with last year's. I don't know if there's any specific questions with any of the regulations.
Any questions from the board? Any public comment? Do I have a motion from the board?
I move the regulations as recommended by our Acting Shellfish Warden.
Department of Defense.
Yeah, Department of Defense.
Second.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? And last call on public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Chuck.
Just one more quick announcement I'd like to make. I'd like to just thank the GIS and the IT department. We now have shellfish maps of the town online, which have color-coded areas of the entire town showing what's open. So those can be downloaded for free on the town website under our department. So anyone can go online and find that.
It's a great idea because reading through these regulations, knowing the laws myself, I was having a little problem about north, south, and each individual. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is a vote to set aside the wind turbine statement of principles. Before we go to this, I'd like to make a statement that myself and Julian Susso met with the affected neighbors a week or so ago, week and a half ago. And we encouraged them to come to the table to work in the consensus building in Options Analysis Group. We hope that we can come to a conclusion of this whole process by September the 1st. The group had expressed some anxiety of the statement of principles. And we, this board has reiterated time and time again that in fact, all options are open as we move forward to try to come to an amicable decision and to the conclusion of this problem. And we hope that with this group, we will be able to come back with some suggestions to the Board of Selectment to take some action. September 1st would be a deadline that the neighbors would like. This board would embrace the sooner the better. That would enable us to actually put together and formulate a warrant article for the Fall Town Meeting. So I would look to show support to the neighbors, to show the neighbors that in fact, everything is on the table as we move forward for all stakeholders, that we would set aside our statement of principles that the Board of Selectment had previously published before the Spring Town Meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to report that at the meeting of the task of the Options Analysis Group, we did have some representatives from the affected neighbors there, fully participatory, very engaged, open to full discussion about what was going to happen. I thought it was a very, very productive meeting. I still remain optimistic that this process has a chance of getting us some very helpful information as we make our decision.
And I want to personally thank Todd Drumme and Kathy Elder, who I know this is a leap of faith for them to embrace this group and move forward and actually believe in this board that we will in fact be open-minded about any and all alternatives as we move forward. I'll be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we set aside the statement of principles.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Next up is a report from the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I realize that you're running a little bit late already and you have a busy schedule this evening, so I'll try to be brief. Since I'm serving as Water Superintendent, as well as Director of Public Works, a couple comments on the water system that over the last several months, we tried to make sure that everything is ready for the summer season. So all sources are available and online, and all storage tanks have already been inspected and cleaned. We completed the winter round of pilot testing for filtration study. That finished up last month, and it will be starting up again around the 1st of August. They'll start mobilizing sometime around middle of next month, and that'll be the summer round of sampling. You need to have the winter and the summer rounds in order to have full season sampling to determine what the protocols are going to be. So then that will culminate in a report that will be available in the fall, and then will be presented before the board in July, about the same time, maybe the 15th, that we'll be starting that up. I was hoping to be able to meet with the board and give them an interim report from the consulting firm on the study, and then that way it'll be able to bring you forward with where we're going on that study as well. Okay?
I've got one question on that.
Yes, go right ahead, Doug.
On the, concerning the feasibility study, there's a must decision that's being made, and that's per order of the state as we proceed with our process for the water, determining what we're going to do about the water supply. Is that correct?
Correct. By October 1st, the town is going to have to decide one way or the other. Either we will filter in some way, shape, or form, or we will have to add additional disinfection techniques at long pond. Either way, it's most, the cheapest of course is to add additional disinfection techniques. But those are mandates, and we will have to be making a decision in order to comply with them.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Todd.
Well, I guess that at some point between now and then, that you will be making a presentation to us, and that will include the costs of either option?
Yes. The interim report next month is not going to go that far. That will give you a report basically on what we have learned thus far on the sampling that has been performed and to provide the board with additional information on the treatment techniques that are being utilized out there. And then in the fall, after September, when we've done the second round, is when we should be able to schedule the additional meeting or meetings that are going to be necessary.
Another question. Is there, is there a plan to have anything on the warrant for the November Town Meeting regarding this? Or would it come in April? I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, the cost analysis as well, not only just to either build or implement it, but also to maintain it over time?
We will likely seek a delay on the requirements as far as October goes, because in theory, we should be implementing something at that time, but we're not going to be able to because we haven't made a decision yet. But since we are in the process, we'll be seeking a delay, probably a one-year delay on that to allow the board and the town to be able to make those decisions. So it's not imperative that we necessarily have something at this November's Town Meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Evening. Peter McConaughey, Acting Town Engineer.
Not anymore. Oh, you are?
He's still acting.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Talk about the Engineering Division and the projects that we're working on. Wild Harbor Road, this was a roadway that was part of our 2012 roadway maintenance paving list. Several roads have already been completed at this time. At this time, we're working with, we're putting plans together and doing some drainage calculations to go through the Conservation Commission with this roadway. There's several wetland areas that run through the road, that run through this area with leak-offs for the drainage. So we're looking to perform improvements and make improvements along the roadway. We'll be going through the Conservation Commission to seek approval, and hopefully later on further than this year, we'll have an asphalt paving over this roadway from Old Main Road to Arlington, Arlington Street. Vetement roadway design, these are the latest round of roadways that we've taken up in the Schumitt Valley. You can see the roadways, Austin, Stokes, Redlands, Regis, Shepitz, and the lengths to the right. The plans are complete. We're doing final calculations on, at this time, we've met with the association. What we, their construction schedule has been set. We're looking forward to moving forward with, to working with the association. This will be a lengthy project. This is going to go, this is, I'll be looking at for a couple of years on this project to go through. And this includes complete milling, paving, drainage, tree work, and the possibility of sidewalk areas. Traffic intersection areas on both these roadways, this slide and the next slide, this is Jones Road and Davis, and Davis Straits and T-Ticket Highway. The 25% plans have been complete. Mass DOT has come to town and done their 25% plans and took comments in from residents and the public. And they went back to the board right now. They're working on 70% plans and reviewing the comments and addressing the comments. There was a shift with these, with these intersection projects. The planning department was holding, was due for the most part during the first 25% of the design was basically managing the project and working with the designer. After the 25%, typically it goes to the Engineering Department with our department, and then we work with the designer on all the infrastructure and construction and scheduling. At this time, this, these two intersections are looking to go to, be out to bid in January of 2013, so it could be construction of spring of 2013. The construction schedule is they can work until Memorial Day, and then they stop for the summer until Labor Day, and then they start up in the Fall Town Round. This is the Davisville intersection. They're looking at some driveway openings on this one currently. The Chappaquaite Seawall, this project, it set a lot of concern with me recently in recent months, and we put a lot of work into this. This package, we put a bid package out two weeks ago to the Central Register for this package. There's a pre-mandatory, a pre-bid mandatory meeting this morning, tomorrow morning on site to go with all the contractors, to go over the issues, to go with, meeting with the Conservation Commission, the Engineering Department, to go over what exactly needs to be done, the construction process, the lay-down areas, the timeframe. So the mandatory pre-bid meeting is tomorrow. Wednesday, we're meeting with the designer and myself, and I believe Conservation Commission agent, the administrator, will be meeting with the DEP over in Hyannis. And then on Friday morning is the, we have a bid opening. So we're looking, at this time, we're looking, we're trying to put in for mid-July construction, 30-day construction. So we're looking at mid-July to mid-August. My big concern with this portion of the wall, as you, as everyone knows, is when Tropical Storm Irene came through, it was an August, it was end-August storm, and it came in, and that's where all this, most of the damage occurred on this roadway. With it being a warm winter in the warm waters, we hope we don't get an active season because we want to have this, this work done. The work is starting to progress up to the north and to the south of this area too, so we're going to be looking at doing further design. But this is the critical area of the seawall. And Monot Road, same thing. We're doing work with the designer. We're putting some plans together, once again, to do work on the seawood side of the seawall. This shows the sidewalk, the sidewalk on the opposite side of the seawall shows the revetment, and there's areas in, old is actually that have been moved in the, some of the revetment have been pushed out. Once we get the Chappaquaite Seawall completed this week and next week, we will be looking, we'll be putting more of our efforts into this project. And that's it. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
I do have one question. Old Barnstable Road, it's still half-finished? Do we have, I guess the first question is, what's holding it up? And two is, how long is it going to take for it to be completely finished?
I believe John Lyons will be addressing this more, but at this time, Insta is, we're waiting for the utility companies. There's the utility poles. Insta has gone through the, down the roadway, and they've moved their utilities. And actually, if you drive down, if you look at the utility poles, they've moved their utilities, they've cut the tops of the poles off. So they, and then after Insta comes Verizon, and after Verizon comes Comcast, and then they will remove the pole. And we, we can't pave the roadway until the poles are out of, out of the roadway. There's several of the poles that are in the roadway. But at this time, as far as paving to do the final course, I believe the town, the town portion is completed. I think John will address it some more, but.
So it's the utility companies?
It's, it's been Insta that we've been, we've been waiting for, for the last couple of months.
Any estimates then as to how long it'll take for them to finish their work?
We've been, we've been in constant contact with them, with emails with them and working with them. With like, the plan was, I would have liked to see it done by the 4th of July, but the 4th of July is two weeks away. So that's, it's not feasible for that. But we're, we keep on sending the emails, and we keep in contact with them, to get them pushing to get Verizon. The, the contact has to go through Insta to go to the other utilities. We can't call Verizon, we can't call Comcast. It has to be Insta that does the, that does the, initiates the calls to remove poles.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. I'd like to see that PE after your name up there.
Nice.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Lyons, Highway Superintendent. And I'll pick up right where your question was on Old Barnstable Road. That, as you are aware, is part of our Chapter 90 project. That has been a very large project for the, for the Highway Division. As reported in previous reports, all of the drainage work was done in-house. All the tree removal and tree work was done in-house by the Forestry Division. All the shoulder preparation, the realigning of the road was all engineered through, through the Engineering Division and carved out by, by us. And there is still some shoulder work done, and we're not quite at the complete state yet. But we'll, I have some, whoops, I have some slides that will kind of go through a chronicle explanation of, of how the process works. This is the actual reclamation of the road. This is the contractor that came in, and they actually pulverize all the existing pavement. It takes several passes, and they, they break up all the, all the asphalt and blend it right into the, into the material. Just another view of the same process there. Following that, the road grader comes and reshapes the road. If there are any drains that haven't worked properly and so forth, that's their opportunity to make sure that the water hits those elevations. Following that, the, the road is compacted by vibratory roller. It's a, it's a process that moves the whole length of the road. Obviously, during construction, one, one side of the road is always open to traffic, so the road is never completely closed. And with any construction project, there's always dust, particularly in the, in the summer, so there is a provision for that, where the water wagon goes up and down the street, controls the dust, and actually also helps with the compaction as well. As, as Peter mentioned, well, actually, I'll get back to that in a second, but the, the road paving follows that process. And this is the contractor doing the, the road paving. Again, it's done in sections. It's rolled as they go along. Traffic travels on, on the unpaved section. And then once they, once they complete one side, once it's rolled, it's usually well enough for the traffic to get back on it. So then it becomes passable on the, on the new laid asphalt, and they'll work on the other side. And this is coming up to the intersection at Hayway Road. Following that, there's some work to adjust some of the structures that, that are in the road. That process, the next few slides will show that process. The rises are put on, the, the structures are brought up. As, as anyone who's traveled the road realizes that there's, they're sticking up a portion now, because that's, when that top coat of asphalt goes on, those will be flush with the, with the new road. We have the rubber sleeves that go around them that help with the impact so that cars can travel over them. Fortunately, most of them are right in the center of the lane, so the cars can actually straddle them. So they, they really don't need to hit each and every one. Again, another, another overview of the whole thing. At the very end of Old Barnstable Road, where it intersects with Hayway, the granite curbing was put in on two of the radiuses. These, these were very tight, right angle, 90-degree turns, and it was very difficult to maneuver a trailer at, at that intersection on both of those corners. So we took advantage of the project to widen the corners and to, to install the granite curb. And there you can see how the old road used to, used to form there. This is also part of the Chapter 90 project, Seaco Shores. This is the milling process. This is a different type of process from what you just saw with the reclamation. This is actually just grinding an inch or two of the existing pavement. You can see the rough surface there. And then the paving process is very similar. And that's the, that's the completed product afterward. And of course, there's new line striping with the project. There's going to be new street signs installed. Signs have been ordered, they just arrived. So that process will begin. There's quite a few signs, so it'll, it'll take a little bit to get them, to get them all in place. Similarly, this is Thomasby Landers and Blacksmith Shop Road. Thomasby Landers fell into the Chapter 90 program. We took advantage here of a similar situation with that corner. That's heading towards the new ice rink if you, if you went straight up. So this would be taking the right on Blacksmith Shop. That was a very tight corner, and it's heavily used by tractor trailers coming from the, the concrete plant and so forth. They had a difficult time, and that, that whole radius was being chewed up. We, we repaired the drain that was there, because that was an issue, and we were able to push the shoulder back a bit and reshape the slope and lumineced it. And then we just went up a bit, just to incorporate the whole intersection into the project. And there's another angle of the improved slope. And the new pavement markings, and again, that's heading towards the highway on Thomasby. Part of our road maintenance project, which is an annual event, is the crack sealing. And we had the contractor in town earlier this spring, and we got several roads done with the crack sealing. We still have some full-depth patching to do in various locations. We'll be working on that. Another picture of the, it's, it's quite a process. And then over at Monot Beach on the west side, which is the beach parking lot furthest away from Central Ave, we had an erosion issue in the parking lot. There was a doom there, and quite a bit of it got eroded during a previous storm. And with the Beach Department asked us to give them a hand and restore. Those are dredgings from Salt River and Fresh River. When the river had clogged, we were, we took those dredgings out of the river, and we were able to truck them here and use them for this, for this purpose. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Yes, David.
Just a couple, John. Here's a woman who lives in Plum Hollow. Every other day, she's out on Old Barnstable from Hayway to the Mashby Line, filling her bag of trash.
Yep.
And she asked me to approach you when this road is done, if you would consider putting some signs for trash, you know, litter. Secondly, the intersection of Hayway and Old Barnstable, Hayway and Old Barnstable, we put that, we showed the radius.
The curve, yep.
Somebody already hit one, it's a big chunk. You see that?
It was a school bus. It was a school bus taking the corner, yeah.
It's a big chunk of it, yeah. Okay. I just thought before they put the final code.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll, we'll make that repair, and actually, I think we can realign that even back a smidge so that we can gain, you know, another, at least six inches or so and, and make it a little more friendly.
The other question I have for you, coming in from Mashby on Old Barnstable, is that a relatively new type of thing, the speed sign that flashes your speed?
Yeah, we just, that was just installed last Friday.
Friday, yeah.
Yeah. We haven't used any in town yet. We, you know, Catherine Lee Bates will, will likely have that in the school zone area. But it is, I don't think they're new to the industry, but they are certainly new to us. We, we discussed it, and certainly there's a lot of traffic that comes from Mashby into Falmouth as a cut-through, and it's very, it gets your attention.
No, it does. It's very similar to the trail the police department has put, which is out on Monot Road right now. It gives you an educational thing.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I just, I hope to see more of those. I just, from my point of view, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Thomas. I'm the wastewater superintendent. I have two slides. There's five bullets. I'm only going to go over two. With your indulgence, I think the other three bullets, there'll be plenty of time to talk about wastewater planning and the turbines. Right button. Okay. Chivwix Pond, this is the outline of where we are. We, this is what we install in cavern absorption for the type of odor we have, for odor control and replacement of wet well and ventilation system. We've identified the low bidder. We got a very good contract price of $189,000. We've issued a notice of award in June. We hope to sign the contract fairly quickly, and we hope this project is substantially completed by the end of this year. This is just a following up, a follow-up on the force main repair. You saw the previous slide and the in-detail briefing I gave you on that project. The slide on the right is to show that the paving for the bike path has been complete since that was a concern to many people. That was completed, I think, around April of this year. That concludes my portion of the presentation. There are no other managers, so I'll be followed by Mr. Ray Jack.
Hold on a minute.
I was told five minutes or less.
My question is the source of the funds for the Chivwix Pond project. I thought that was included in one of the articles.
It was.
Of Town Meeting. Article 17 or 18.
18, I believe.
Article 18. So that's where the funding is?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. You made it under five.
I get a bonus if you. I get a bonus if you...
That's from Duncan.
Mr. Gomes was going to try to be here this evening. Ms. Newton is on vacation, but Mr. Gomes was going to try to be here this evening, but he had a personal matter that he wasn't sure if he was going to make it, so I guess he's not. So I will try to handle his. Gulf Full Field, this is the infield over at the ball field, and this is prior to having the infield redone with new sod. And this is the after-picture. So the Commodores actually funded that, but we provided all the labor as we do on all the fields. But this was a great project to get done for this year. And the way it was done is going to enhance it for the next couple of years as well, because they not only did the sodding, but the substrate as well. For the Veterans Day memorial services, the memorial here, as well as the Catherine Lee Bates memorial, were redone. So this is one of the before pictures. And utilizing help and hands from the Mullen Hall School, which was a project with the kids over there, over 22 kids assisted in this endeavor. So the beautification council also provided the source of funding for some of the plants and what have you. So everybody was working very well together with the Parks Department. It turned out to be a really great project. We've gotten a lot of favorable comments back from it. So this is how it turned out, as far as the memorial goes. And then, this one here is the before picture for the Catherine Lee Bates statue, and that was the after shot. So it truly was a great community-type of project. Really worked out well. This was just finishing up a project that the Parks Department had started before. It was about 320, I think it was 320 feet of cobblestone edging that they had put on there in order to delineate the planning area, which you can see between the sidewalk area and the curve area at the bottom. That has numerous plantings along there, so this was just finalizing that project. On Main Street, these were some of the benches that we have down there. And of course, when it comes to maintenance, it's very difficult, time-wise, money-wise, to be able to get to the maintenance, what have you. But each year, in different departments, we always try to do a little bit more on Main Street, between the poles and what have you. So this year, the Parks Department took on the benches out there, and this is what they were looking like before. And they took them back to the shop, they cleaned them all up, replaced some of the bad boards, and then they stained them, painted them, and put them back in place. And this is the Village Green Fence. The fence was made of locust wood. It's really not that old, but I guess it's really a question of the grade, if you will, because I know that there have been considerations about the older fence that was there that lasted several decades. And this one's less than 20, about 20 years old. So here, it's in severe distress, and this is just showing you a couple areas of that distress, but it's literally all throughout the entire park area. So I think in the future, we're going to be looking at substantial rebuilding and/or replacement of the Village Green Fence area. And that was after they did their work to try to get it ready for the summer season. And that was that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, but I remember probably 20 years ago, when that fence was a replacement for the old one.
Right.
And, yeah, probably right, about every 20 years, it'll have to replace. Is that something that the Sheriff's Department can assist with, or is that a town project?
Well, I know that the town will be looking at it. It's not so much, I don't think it's so much the labor cost, as much as it is the cost of that wood...
Of the wood.
...is up there. That is some very expensive wood. And of course, if you get cheaper grades of wood, they don't last as long, they don't look as good. And I think people are really attached to the locust up in that area, because historically, that's what it's been.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And will you... Does that conclude your report, or do you have someone else? Wonderful.
We said we tried to be quick.
Thank you very much. Any public comments? Come on up. Please address it through the chair.
Mark Finer in Precinct 6. In the days or weeks after the last quarterly report presentation, the ice and snow removal figures were released. There was also an article done about it in the newspaper, and they covered about, I'd say, 20 towns in the area. Of those 20 towns, only two overspent their ice and snow budget, because as anybody remembers, there was very little snow this winter. One town, I can't remember what it was, overspent their budget by something like 15%. It wasn't a great deal. Our town, and these figures are not exactly, I won't swear by them, but they're roughly close, our town budgeted somewhere in the neighborhood of $89,000 for ice and snow removal, and the actual bill at the end of the year was somewhere in excess of $250,000, which is close to a 300% overage, whatever. I was asked, and I was curious myself, so I investigated, and I was told what they do with the DPW is when equipment breaks, they just put it in the shed, store it aside, and because the snow and ice budget, by statute, is the only budget you can overspend on, they, as soon as the first snow comes, they say that all that equipment was broken during the snowstorm, and then therefore, they get funding to fix it. I'm not going to believe them, but I'd like to hear somebody deny that, if possible.
There are repairs that are paid for, the snow and ice budget, and those are repairs that are breakages that are incurred during storms. Parts are bought for that purpose. Some of the repairs are major in nature. There could be transmissions. There have been blown engines. So it varies from A to Z. As far as the overall budget, our snow and ice budget, as you know, is $96,750 in salt alone. And that is the preseason preparation of stocking the salt shed, because as everyone knows, you never know what the winter's going to bring. Stocking the salt shed, we only had the one major event, if you will, where we had the eight inches. But we did have several salting events where we had icy roads and so forth. We spent $92,000 of that $96,750 in just road salts. You throw in the contractor cost for the snowstorm that we had, the eight-inch snowstorm. You throw in the overtime, because it was weekends, all the other cumulative costs, and that's how we got to the figure that we got to. In the big picture, yeah, a lot of towns didn't go over their budgets, but a lot of towns were budgeted much more. Barnstable has a $600,000 snow and ice budget. They only spent $500. But if you look in comparison with the same amount of snowfall and so forth, they still spent much more than Falmouth did, for only about 100 miles more of road than what we maintain. That's probably the best explanation I can give.
Thank you, John. Okay. Anything else? Any other public comment? All right, thank you very much. Thank you for your report. Next up is vote to affirm appointments. We're going to turn over the first one to the new Personnel Director to the Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As the board is aware, on appointments of certain department and division head personnel, while the Town Manager is the appointing authority, those recommendations for appointment are brought to the board for the board's consideration and concurrence. And they have two recommendations to bring to the board this evening. The first is Ms. Denise Coleman as Director of Personnel, and I wanted to give a little brief summary. I know I've provided the board with a copy of Ms. Coleman's resume, and she is in attendance with us here this evening. Ms. Coleman is currently serving as an Area Human Resources Manager with Cape Cod Healthcare, having worked in that capacity since 2008. She served as the Human Resources Director for the town of Weymouth, Massachusetts, from 2003 to 2007. The board's probably aware, that's of course a similar position to the Personnel Director position here, except that Weymouth has considerably, is a larger community with a larger number of employees. Ms. Coleman has a bachelor's degree in Business Administration from Emmanuel College. She's an experienced Personnel Administrator, including considerable experience in both municipal and private sector personnel issues, including contract negotiation and collective bargaining. And she is currently, also another matter I should note, as the board is aware, on department heads, there is a residency requirement. Ms. Coleman is currently a resident of the neighboring town of Sandwich. And pursuant to that, I would ask the board to consider waiving the residency requirement for department heads in an instance like this, where we have a highly qualified individual who is noted a resident of a neighboring community already. And I heartily recommend Ms. Denise Coleman for Personnel Director position. And we did receive a large number of applications, and it's been a very exhaustive process, as Ms. Coleman is aware, in terms of background checks, reference checks, and a multitude of other reviews. And be happy to answer any questions the board may have. I would welcome your questions, your concurrence, and you may wish to hear from Ms. Coleman as well.
Any questions? Maybe we would take a vote to affirm the appointment, and then ask Ms. Coleman to come up and speak a little bit? I'll move that we approve the appointment.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Eyes have it. Please, could we have you come up and say a few words? Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I again, thank you very much for the opportunity. I would be honored to be a part of the town of Falmouth, and I am very much committed to providing high-quality programs and services that everyone will benefit from. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great to have you on board. I know that we've had a void in this Town Hall with Personnel Director. We've filled that void with a part-time consultant, but I'm sure that the rank-and-file employees of the community look forward to having someone to deal with, on whether it be questions, answers, or as the town moves forward in succession plans from additional departments. If there's anyone on the board that can help you, give you a little institutional memory, I guess, feel free to call on any one of us.
Thank you.
But thank you very much, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm thrilled. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the residency requirement.
Okay. Here's a motion to waive the residency requirement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Eyes have it.
Thank you, members of the board, and welcome, Denise. I do want to note that Denise will begin her work as Personnel Director on Monday, July 30th, and obviously giving adequate notice to her current employer that she'll be joining us soon, so we do look forward to that with great anticipation.
Great, thank you.
Also, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I also have a proposed appointment of Water Superintendent, Mary Beth Weiser. And Ms. Weiser is an experienced Water Systems Manager. Her background, training, and experience meet or exceed all of the requirements for this position. She possesses a Bachelor of Science degree in Biology and Chemistry, and is licensed to operate water systems in both New Hampshire and Massachusetts. She's demonstrated management and supervisory experience, water treatment system experience, water system licensing, budgeting and planning for water systems as well. She has worked as Utilities Manager for Salem, New Hampshire, and as Chief Water Plant Operator for the City of Rochester, New Hampshire as well. She would be available to begin with us on Monday, July 6th. And I want to thank Ray Jack for his excellent work, as well as our other colleagues, in going through a number of applicants for this position as well. And I believe Ray, is Mary Beth Weiser here? Mary Beth is with us?
In the background.
Okay, just slightly out of eye shot for me. And so, Mary Beth Weiser is here. Mr. Chairman, to make a few comments, that would be in order for the board, and we would welcome the board's concurrence to this appointment as well. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move the appointment of Mary Beth Weiser as the Water Superintendent.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the board?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, after reading your resume, the past history over the past couple of years, I want, it's very refreshing to see somebody who's actually very knowledgeable about water, and I really appreciate you showing an interest in Falmouth, and I'm very impressed with your past work and your resume. Thank you very much.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Eyes have it. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself to the community?
Good evening, and again, thank you very much for the appointment. I'm very excited. This is a new adventure for me. I'm relocating from Maine, so I'm going to be pretty busy over the next few weeks, packing up and moving to Falmouth. So thank you.
Well, I know that the town of Falmouth welcomes you. We've been looking forward to having a new wastewater supervisor, manager?
Water.
Water. Sorry. Jerry, I didn't get rid of your head. Or we did, yeah. But thank you very much, and reiterating what David had to say, your experience in filtration is also going to be a pleasant addition to the community as we move forward with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Welcome aboard. Okay, next up is committee reappointments. If anyone needed to leave the room, you can do so before we get to those things. The first set of interviews is the Zoning Board of Appeals. We had one interview last week with David Hadad. Tonight, we have an interview with Patricia Johnson. Pat, would you like to come up? Like to give us a minute or two update, and we'll go from there?
For the benefit of the audience, I am Patricia Johnson. I live in North Falmouth. I am currently finishing my fourth year as an Associate Member or Alternate Member on the Board of Appeals. I am retired. I am very diligent. I always do my site visits, and I do the homework that's necessary to make good decisions on the board. I'm reviewing a lot of materials in the zoning office. I was on the ZBA in the 80s as an alternate. I have also been a town meeting member for more than 25 years, and I served on the Design Review Committee, and I was on the land bank committee from when it started. I have been a year-round resident of Falmouth for about 30 years, and a taxpayer for 15 years before that, 30 years. I have a very good understanding of the zoning bylaws in town, and the history of Falmouth. I have a lot of institutional memory because of my interest in the zoning and development of Falmouth. I'm not involved in any businesses that would slant my, or preclude my ability to make a fair and open decision on the cases that come before the board. Do you have any questions?
Okay. I'll open up the questions to the board. Doug, you want to go first?
Thank you, Sid. You've been the alternate member for the past four years, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. We have five-year terms now.
Thank you.
Okay. David?
I've actually been to a few of the ZBA meetings. I'm very familiar with Mrs. Johnson. I really have no questions, but thank you very much for your application.
President?
No questions. Thank you.
Pat?
I just have a comment. I know from my own experience being on the board, that Pat Johnson has been always very interested in the development of the community, or the lack of development in some cases, or the reason not to develop in certain areas. And I know that she has participated in many different areas and activities and projects in the town, and has developed a very good sense of what the town needs and what the town should have. And she works very hard. So I'm glad that you, actually, after your time as an alternate member, that you saw fit to consider being a full member of the ZBA. I don't see where it would be much more of a commitment, or would it? How do you view it?
Well, I go though, until we had a full board, I was, I had the opportunity to sit on a lot of cases, because... on a lot of cases because there were only six of us and half the time, somebody was missing or absent. So, I had a lot of opportunities. But with a full board and the fact that I do come to all the meetings, I really would like the opportunity to vote on the cases. We have a very, very good board and a very good chairman. He's taught me a lot. And I just would like the opportunity to be a voting member after having four years as an alternate. And I also would like the opportunity to ask the board again, Board of Selectmen. You asked me the last time what I thought, before I went on in 2008, what I thought the most difficult aspect of the Board of Appeals is. And I will, at that time, I said I thought the non-conforming issues were. But I really think the real deep-seated problem is the fact that we have a very haphazardly put-together zoning bylaw book. And it's very confusing. It's very difficult for people to clearly understand, including the board, what, you know, what the law, what the bylaw says. I mean, we need to get it updated. We need to have it reflect modern technology. It would be a big benefit for this town and maybe prevent future lawsuits if we had a really good job done on revising the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
I just wanted to make-
David?
No, you go.
I just wanted to say, when we had our joint meeting a few months ago, I've been assured two of the things I came out of that meeting concerned about was just what you said. And secondly, the enforcement issue of your orders not being followed. And I've been assured by Julian that this is something that he is looking into. So, I'm taking him at his word. It's something that will be resolved at some point, both the book and Hut giving you some help with enforcement issues. I can only tell you what I've been told, but he's right there, and I take him at his word. Thank you.
That's exactly what I was going to say, mostly about the bylaw, that we talked about that at the joint meeting, and that was a really important topic for future action.
My question is, is that the Zoning Board of Appeals typically has an opportunity to grant relief under certain circumstances for folks. And I wouldn't have said anything until Pat actually brought it up, your avid interest in lack of development. So, my question is, can you look at and continue to look at specific reliefs based on the interpretation of what our current zoning bylaws are, not reading into those current bylaws? I mean, we all love, would love to see Thalmud the way it was maybe 40 years ago, except, you know, times change and things change. So, but, you know, we have to go by the law specifically in the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, that's my question.
Yes. What we could have, all we can deal with is what the bylaw says. I mean, there is many cases where a lawyer is presenting his interpretation of the bylaw because, you know, he's representing a client. The Board of Appeals really has to follow the book to the best of our ability as to what we think it says.
I just wanted to clarify that term, lack of development. What I was really referring to was 20 and 25 years ago, before we, before all of the building in town really mushroomed, there was a group of people in North Thalmud that actually looked at the area in terms of areas that where development should occur and maybe areas where it should not occur. And it was really looking at the zoning because all along with 28A, that's what I really meant was, was more planned growth rather than just letting growth happen.
Okay. All right. Have anything else from the board? Thank you very much. As this board knows, this is a regulatory appointment, and we will not be meeting again. So, I'd look for a motion to put-
Oh, we have a candidate, don't we?
No, we only have two candidates, and we've already interviewed the other candidate.
You're right. Forgot about that.
We interviewed David Hadad last week.
I remember we did, yeah.
So, just as a reminder to everybody else that we had David Hadad as well. So, I've looked for a motion to put both names in the nomination.
I so move to put David Hadad and Patricia Johnson on nomination.
Motion. And do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Ayes have it. I'll do a roll call vote. Doug Jones first?
Patricia Johnson.
Okay. David Brager?
Patricia Johnson.
Pat Flynn?
Patricia Johnson.
Brett?
Patricia Johnson.
And just to keep everybody in the mix, I'll give a vote to David Hadad to make sure that he continues to stay involved and work through the future. Pat, thank you very much, and you're now the voting member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And as we move forward, we, I believe we would have one additional alternate position for those folks out there who are interested in that position. So, we'll be advertising that. Thank you very much, both of you. Be a service.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next up is Conservation Commission. First up is Tom Corvo. Sorry, we kept you last week waiting in limbo for about three and a half hours.
I think I made mention it. I thought we had all the fun. This is, I'm never at a loss to see how good a community I live in, the depth of the applicants, both for the full-time positions and such. My resume is a born-high graduate, and then the rest of it's a school hired knocks. I would like to, at this point, just make a couple of acknowledgements publicly. In the last three years, with the help of my family who supported me in my appointment, the compromises I made in family time accomplishing that, and for my employer who allowed me the extra time necessary during the day to be able to go to special hearings and things like that. In the last three years, I have been appointed to, elected to be Vice Chair. I could be wrong, but I don't think so. In that three years' time, I had, missed two scheduled hearings, one for heart surgery and the other for a death in the family. Two special hearings, and that was just because I couldn't get out of work. I take what I do very seriously. I truly love my Thalmud. I've been fortunate enough to work in construction since 1979, 98% of it in the Town of Thalmud. My children were born here. I plan on staying here till I am no longer here. All that put aside, I struggled to ask for this reappointment, not because of the commitment and not because of the task in front of me. The litigious part of this, which you are all well too familiar with, has been tough from time to time and stressful. It's a regulatory board, and there have been times when we made decisions collectively as a board, and it came back at us. And it's frustrating. We thought we did the right thing, and on remand, we've been overturned. Other times, you know, it's flipped the other way. That's the only sour note in the whole orchestra. I can, I can deal with that. I just wanted to let you know, there is a, the board that I sit on is deep. They're educated. They're impressive. I constantly learn when I'm there from all the other board members. I hope that I have educated some as well, and I really would like to be reappointed.
Okay. I'll open it up to questions. We'll start with Pat first. Okay. Brett?
No questions, but I think, having been on the Conservation Commission myself, I think Mr. Corvo has a very good grasp of the task in front of him, and I very much appreciate his willingness to serve again. So, thank you.
I was going to just say the same thing. So, I have no questions for you, Tom. Thank you.
Doug?
I just would reiterate what you've said. I appreciate that you've considered, before just automatically reapplying, saying you thought about it and said, yep, I'm ready to do it again. And I want to, you know, express my appreciation for your willingness to do that. Thank you.
I just want to make a couple of comments. I've been to some of your meetings and I've watched quite a few. I appreciate your level-headedness and your approach to finding a good reason why something can be done, not why something just can't be done. There are two ways to get to point B. And we need to protect the resource, but we also need to find a way that we can accomplish a goal and that both sides can be happy. And I've seen that, and I've seen you be able to do that, and I appreciate you to continue to do that, whether it be in the full voting member spot or the alternate spot. Thank you.
That wasn't a question, that was a statement.
Thank you. Okay. Next up-
Since one's a full and one's an alternate, do we do this as two separate motions?
No, we got to do all the interviews first.
There's another one. It's not on this list.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's just incumbents that are up.
I believe we have a Michael Powers.
He's for the alternate, right?
Michael Powers here? Okay. Then the other, other representative, other candidate is Tom Vos. Would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the Conservation Commission?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Tom Vos. I'm born and raised in Woods Hole, down on Gansett Point, and my dad is a caretaker. I've worked for him for a long time on that estate as well as other estates. I've been swimming and sailing around here since before I could walk. So, it's a very valuable resource to me. And on the other hand, I think, like you were saying, there's a way that both parties can be happy, and we can protect the ocean and get a lot accomplished. And I think that makes me a good candidate. Also, I'm self-employed now, so I can, you know, schedule meetings and site building and stuff like that. And that's about it. I think I'll be a good addition if I'm voted in.
Okay. We'll open it up to questions. Doug?
And what is your matter of business? You were saying you're self-employed?
Yeah, building and remodeling and design.
Okay. Thank you.
David?
How many, have you been to any of the meetings?
I've been to one meeting, and I bought the buck, and I've been studying it.
Okay. Brett?
Now, you understand this is a regulatory board as opposed to a, an advisory board. The Conservation Commission's role is, I'm struggling with the word, as a regulatory board, it's a quasi-judicial body, is the word I'm looking for, in that it issues decisions that can be challenged in court. And I guess one of the questions I have is your understanding, do you understand, I guess, that it's a situation where your personal opinions really have to be set aside in all aspects?
Absolutely. Yes, I understand that.
Thank you. Okay?
Well, my question would be around working in a group and how you might handle conflict, particularly in a board like the Conservation Commission. Members can have different opinions, as Brent alluded to, about a project and perhaps how they might see the outcome of that project. So, how do you usually handle conflict in a group?
Well, I definitely, I'm willing to listen to everyone's point of view. If I have a strong opinion, then, you know, I'm willing to listen and consider other people's all options. But I'm, you know, if I have a strong opinion, I'll probably want to stick with that. But I'm always willing to negotiate and talk and, you know, give and take.
Okay. All right. I don't have any questions. I know Mr. Vos. We have actually two, we have a full-time member, and that would create an alternate member. So, we have two openings this evening. The other candidate, Michael Powers, was seeking the full-time member's spot but did not, yes?
Would I be able to address for Michael Powers?
No, not really. He didn't call, and he was notified, so, okay. And he would be, this would be for the full-time member's spot, the one, the voting member. So, he wouldn't be leaving his current position. If you follow, you were both alternates, if I'm not mistaken.
I think Michael Powers is a full-time-
He's the vice chairman.
He's a full-time member.
You're the full-time member. What says, is one vacancy for a full-time member.
Right.
So, this is a reappointment for you and then one full-time member and an alternate?
Right. I think that's right.
Okay. But she didn't put that on.
No, she didn't.
She didn't put the other one on.
No, she didn't.
It's on the next sheet.
Yes?
It's in your packet on a spreadsheet and noticed in here that there is a, as a result of Ted Durker's resignation-
Resignation, that's correct.
There's a single, another position.
So, there's two full-time, the current incumbent-
Two full-time and an alternate position.
And then another opening for a full member.
No.
No?
No. We have-
Durker.
Can I ask you a question? Is, is, is Mr. Durker a voting member or an alternate?
I believe it's a voting-
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what it says.
So, then we have you and him as well, and then we have an applicant for, you're both up for renewal. And then we have an applicant for the resignation of Mr. Durker, which expires on 6/30/15.
His term ends.
His term would end on 6/30/15. So, we have three, three positions and three applicants. Yes?
So, it sounds like-
We have two.
Twenty fifteen, though, it sounds like Mr. Durker did not choose to reapply for-
That's correct.
Okay. So, there is the, okay.
All right. So, we have three positions.
No, he-
Two full and an alternate.
Two full, one of whom is an incumbent, one is a vacant position, and then one alternate position. That's what we have.
And what I see on the form here is that the alternate is reapplying to be the alternate.
Right.
He is not, he is not applying to be a full member.
Right.
That's correct. So, we have an applicant to be a full member.
Right. So, we should vote on the incumbent first, I would think.
Well, we put both names in the nomination for the voting members.
Okay.
If I could have a motion for the two voting members' names?
I mean, that we put Thomas Paul Carvo and Tom Vos, both as nominations for the two voting members of the Conservation Commission?
The terms expire on 6/30/15.
Right. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the board? Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Ayes have it. Now, I'll look for a motion for an alternate position for-
Michael Powers.
Michael Powers. If you're, so I have a motion for Michael Powers to be renewed as an alternate member of the Conservation Commission with the term expiring on 6/30/15.
I have a question.
Yes.
We did not hear from Mr. Powers.
No, we did not. There's nothing in the folder?
Could we hear from Mr. Corvo? He said he might be able to say something. I'd just like to see an explanation as to why Mr. Powers didn't-
I don't have an explanation why he's not here.
Okay.
But I can just tell you that he has been sitting on the board for, I believe, close to half a year.
That's correct.
And that's about all that I, he is familiar with what the board does.
Mr. Chairman, given that Mr. Powers is an alternate, I'd like to give him the benefit of the doubt and ask that we reschedule his interview, because it would not, it would not create any issues with quorums or any other such thing with the commission if he were not reappointed.
There is one thing, though, that he did send in his desire to be reappointed. We could interview him, but that's, it's up to the board. I'd really like to be able to have him sit in at the next Conservation Commission meeting. We're not going to be meeting again for some time.
Until the 15th. It's possible since it's- It's possible since it's July, they may, they may need him for a quorum.
I'm just reluctant because I'd like to find out why he's not here. If, I'd like to give people the benefit of the doubt that he's not standing us up, I guess, and know that maybe there was a mix-up or some other such thing, but I would like to have the opportunity to interview him, so. But I'm one of five, so.
I just, if he wanted us to resign, he could possibly do that. He's the only candidate we have, so my inclination would be to reappoint him. Nancy, do you have something to say?
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth, Precinct Five. I'm a frequent watcher of the Conservation Commission, and I think it would be appropriate if you interviewed him because, I guess one question I would have is if he knew if Mr. Durker was not reapplying when he applied for the alternate position. All right, I was going to make a comment that I thought he had been doing a very good job, but that may not be an appropriate comment. But I think it would be appropriate if you interviewed him.
I mean, we've already appointed the two full-time members. We've taken a vote on that, so both of them have been appointed this evening. It would be just to renew his appointment as an alternate member.
Mr. Chairman, is this the only, the second year we've had the policy of interviewing incumbents? We, I guess I would love to give him the benefit of the doubt, saying, until we really have this policy we've done for a few years, I can understand why incumbents might think all they need to do is let us know. I would encourage them to come, but I know we've sent them the letter, but I would concur with your idea that we reappoint him for the alternate position. If there's a way that we could invite him to come and talk to us anyway, but still to move forward the process, maybe we can get, get both things done.
I'm not going to make a motion, so if I have a motion to put his name in nomination, yes?
Just as a matter of procedure, I did hear the board vote to put both names in nomination, but I'm not sure that I heard an actual vote to appoint. I don't know if you have a record of that vote to appoint?
Yes, we voted.
Did you vote to appoint?
We voted to, we voted to appoint both Mr. Carvo and Mr. Vos to the full, to the full member positions.
Right.
You did, okay.
Okay, so.
So I would move to appoint Mr. Powers, Michael Powers, to the alternate position, term ending 6/30/15.
Second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vos?
Vos.
All right, thank you very much. Yes?
I'd like to thank you for the reappointment, and I look forward to working with Mr. Vos. And in three years' time, we'll smile again.
Thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
And I hope your family continues to be supportive.
Very much so.
Yeah, thank you. All right, appointments are, are done at this time. We do have a list of vacancies that we will be publishing. If you'd like me to read these down, I'd be happy to do so. It's up to the board. We have openings on the Affirmative Action Committee, the Foreval Housing Committee, the Assessors Board, the Beach Committee, well, it says that we have an opening, but that's through 6/30/13, so I think we've filled that position. Bike Ways Committee, Cable Advisory Committee, Cape Cod Commission, Cape Cod Light Compact, Coastal Management Committee, Council on Aging, Cultural Council, Design Review Committee, Disabilities Commission, Energy Committee, Historic District Committee, Historic Commission, Human Services, the Retirement Board, Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Substance Abuse Committee, Town Building Committee, Transportation Management Committee, and the zoning, well, the Zoning Board of Appeals we filled this evening. But those are the issues, the areas where we have vacancies out there for folks, so if anyone wants to.
I just want to say the Cape Cod Compact is an alternate position. We have a full member on the, that's Ron Zweig.
I also think I read something where the Retirement Board appointed someone last week to that by Brittenau was positioned, that was vacant.
That's the selectmen's appointment, so they can't do that.
No, it's a selectmen's appointment. Yep.
That appointment has to come from the Board of Selectmen. So if they did, they did it in error.
Yeah, better check.
If you could check that.
We will, we'll check. Go ahead. I have a question. The Transportation Management Committee does not have a quorum at present, correct?
They don't have a committee.
Nothing.
So they haven't, can we perhaps discuss, and, you know, at times we reappoint, I think, without discussion, but certainly I think there's an opportunity here to look at what it is the commission does or did do, and ask ourselves if it's worthwhile keeping this commission and whether or not we want to simply dissolve it and move on. Oftentimes, there's complaints that we can't fill positions in town, but then again, we've got upwards of 50 or 60 committees and 300, 400 volunteers. Perhaps it's not that we can't fill the positions, maybe it's just that we have too many committees and we should probably slim things down a little bit. And here's an opportunity, I think, to perhaps at a future date, put this on the agenda and look at what it is that the committee does and ask ourselves if it can be done by another committee or if there's an opportunity here to just dissolve it.
And I wholeheartedly agree with you. Mr. Suso and I have had some conversation about trying to maybe merge some of these committees. I mean, we have some committees that have five openings, four openings, three openings, six openings. I mean, these committees surely don't have quorums, and sometimes when you start a committee, you know, it's useful, we don't have a sunset clause on them, I guess is the best way to put it. So maybe I could, the board could assign, you know, some suggestions to the Town Manager's office that maybe you could see the appropriate way to merge some of these committees, as we are looking to merge some departments in this town and the reporting to, to the Town Manager. So maybe we could look at some of these, these groups as well.
Happy to do so, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Great suggestion, Brent.
Thank you.
Next up is, yes, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Matt McNamara, Zoning Board of Appeals. If you would, you appointed an associate member to a voting member, so we do need an associate member now for a term ending June 30th, 2016. So if you would add that to your list, because you just made her an associate to a voting member.
Right.
And while I have the elector, I'm just going to recognize Dennis Murphy, happens to be your nephew, who was an outstanding and valuable contributor to this town through the Zoning Board of Appeals, somebody that has worked through the transition from a three-member board to a five-member board, and he certainly will be missed by our board, and I'm sure the community owes him quite a deal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I personally have thanked him. I encouraged him to run again, but he does have a young family and had some obligations at home, and I know, in fact, just as Tom said tonight, a lot of times we have to weigh those issues and we might see him again at some point in time. Thank you. Okay, next up is request for extension of hours, Grill 327, 327 Gifford Street. Just before we get going, I want to make a disclosure on the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Hi, good evening. Want to introduce yourself?
Michelle Grogan.
Okay, and tell us what you're looking for.
We're just looking to extend our liquor license from 12:00 AM to 1:00 AM. We have, we are next to the Kuna Messet. We have people coming over from the wedding parties, and we can't serve them at past 12, so we're just looking to extend for an hour, because the weddings go till 12.
Okay.
And we're also looking for Sunday mornings. We have people coming in looking for mimosas. Don't know if we can serve them at 10:30 instead of 12.
So you're looking to, your current, you're looking to change your current operating hours Monday through Saturday from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM?
Yes.
That's what's on here, is that correct?
Yes.
And then on Sunday from 10:30 to 1:00 AM? That's what you have on here?
Okay.
And we're not talking operating, we're talking liquor license, because you operate.
Right, right.
That's correct. That's what you want?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure that that's what you requested.
Yes.
I mean, because you could go earlier during the week, but 11:00 AM is what you're asking for.
11:00 AM during the week is, yes.
Okay.
It's just Sunday that we have people coming in and we can't serve them until noon.
No, we don't, we don't have this on tonight's application.
Okay.
And so we, no, not the hours, but the entertainment, and I think you do have an entertainment license there.
The entertainment we're leaving, I think, as is.
As is, okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure, because it's not part of this application this evening.
Right.
Okay. So does the board have any questions? Any public comment? I look for a motion then to change the hours of operation from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, and from 10:30 AM to 1:00 AM on Sundays.
Some, second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vos? Aye, aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Keep in mind, you still have to be out of there by 1:30, so.
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you.
All right, next up is request for sign variance, T Ticket Market, Inc., 126 T Ticket Highway. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brian Anderson, the owner of T Ticket Market, T Ticket Highway. I'm here to request two sign code variances, one under section 184-30 and 184-10. We'll get to them. Your probably, in your packet, is a letter from Building Commissioner Latio Gore, where we were cited for a sign that we had had for some years, and it has been determined that it was not eligible under the bylaw. The first section of the bylaw that I'm asking for a variance from is the Sandwich Board section of the bylaw, is section 184-30, section D, as cited by the Building Commissioner. Basically, the size and the distances are not what I'm asking for, but the Building Commissioner determined, according to his letter, that beer is not a perishable food within the meaning of the bylaw. And it's one quick sentence, I'd like to read it. The sign shall advertise perishable goods for sale only, such as food goods or a menu. When I was first reading this, it was on my iPad, so I just highlighted the word beer and hit define, and I did the same thing to food. The definition of food was any nutritious substance that people or animals eat or drink or that plants absorb in order to maintain life and growth. Because beer is nutritious and because people do drink it, I have a hard time understanding how somehow these few words that I just read you, that there is another intent. Now verbally, I was told that the definition in the bylaw prohibits it and that it's food only. Last time we were here for another sign code hearing, there was discussion amongst the selectmen, some people said it should be a perishable at 72 hours, it should be a refrigerated perishable, maybe it should be a perishable but not plants. I'm here to request the variance this evening, but I don't want the same variance that was issued the evening before. I'd like a condition on my variance. And the condition is, if Town Meeting changes this bylaw section, my variance goes away. Because my recommendation is the selectmen should take advantage of their sign code committee, the Design Review Committee. One of the purposes in the bylaw of the Design Review Board is to periodically review existing sign bylaws and advise the Board of Selectmen to desirable modifications. I think just the conversation and confusion at the last meeting and the lack of understanding of this bylaw, it should go to the Design Review Board and probably a recommendation should be made to Town Meeting. Then Town Meeting will say up or down. They do want beer, they don't want beer, they want it for plants, they don't want it for plants, whatever it is. But any variance that you issue me this evening, I don't want a variance, most variances you issue go forever. When Town Meeting changes the bylaw, your variance will still survive. Stipulating this variance that if Town Meeting votes to change it, I'd like to go along with whatever Town Meeting wants. I believe the sign goes along with Town Meeting wrote and voted, but I'm asking for the variance because it's the only way I have of trying to figure out how it has been defined that beer is not food. The second variance is a little more difficult. It's under section 184, section 10. Like the chairman at the last meeting, it goes back a few years, and I can't remember, but sometime in the 1970s or 80s, the town changed the sign code bylaws. It is a very short 44 words. Standard brand names, logos, symbols, slogans of advertised products or services shall be displayed only if that brand comprises more than 25% of the dollar value of the sales of the premises, as declared by an affidavit by the business owner and manager. Now, in the 70s and 80s, I owned a store in East Falmouth, and most stores had 15, 20, 30-foot-long Pepsi, Coke, Budweiser, Schlitz signs. On the very end of it, they'd print the name of your business. The pizza shops had them, the stores, retail stores had them, the restaurants had that type of sign, the plastic sign with the lights behind them. And the town decided they didn't want to name brands on the building signs, and Town Meeting voted it. And eventually, you saw most of those signs disappear in the community. Personally, I don't think it's a bad thing. But the way the law is written, section 184-10, doesn't stipulate that this applies only to the building sign. It applies to every sign in town. Every sign. Sandwich board signs, neon signs, window signs, wall signs, real estate signs. Brand name isn't 25% of your total sales, it's illegal. This could be very detrimental to the independent businessperson. The chain store, the franchise, the multinational has less of a problem, they have multimillion-dollar budgets. As a small independent businessperson, I tie my name to brand names. I don't have a multimillion-dollar budget. So I tie my name to the brand name Big Game when I advertise the lottery. I tie my name to Coca-Cola or Pepsi when I advertise soda. When I advertise milk, I advertise Gorillak Milk. I tie my name to that brand name. It's very important to us to be able to use that in our window signs and our neon signs. I think neon signs would be the absolute proof that this was never the intent of Town Meeting, nor was ever up until now enforced this way. We've all driven down the road and seen a neon sign at a liquor store in this town that didn't just say beer, it has a brand name, Corona, Budweiser. But now, we're going to enforce this bylaw that's been on the books, I don't know, 20, 25 years, as it is written, which means no brand names. I'd like, because I believe I'm the only businessperson that's been cited under this, I'd like to ask for a variance, but then again, tell the selectmen, condition it. If Town Meeting changes section 184-10, let my variance disappear. And whatever Town Meeting wants 184-10 to be in the future, I'll comply with. But to stop advertising all brand names at this time, and to be the only businessperson in town that's been cited under this, I think is unfair. The problem is, at least I've been told, that it's a complaint-driven enforcement mechanism. I've been verbally and written and told about this section of bylaw three times in four and a half years. So evidently, the only complaint the Building Commissioner ever receives is about brand names on my business. Going down the road the other day, I saw brand names of tires on a tire shop, I saw brand names of milk, soda, and cigarettes in convenience stores, I saw a hair cutting salon that had a brand name of the products they sell, the hardware store had a brand name of the paint they sell, retail stores that sell propane, you know, the returnable tanks, had the brand name of the propane. These brand names are everywhere in town. Again, my recommendation is that the selectmen please ask the Design Review Committee to review this and make a recommendation as soon as possible to Town Meeting of what we really want to do in the town. But to go without advertising brand names, if I have to put on my sign a name-brand spiced rum. a name-brand spiced rum rather than putting Captain Morgan Spiced Rum, is unfair. Especially, when it has been insinuated, it's not going to be enforced anywhere else unless there's a complaint. And I don't know if the administrator did have the meeting that you recommended last week, but if he did have the, if there's any input he could take in what direction the Building Commissioner is taking on this. Asking for the two variances with stipulations that they die if there are amendments was the only approach I could, I thought I could take. But if there was something that came out of discussions that may have had, I'd love to hear them. I went to the selectman's office earlier today to ask for anything that was in writing in the packets, and they said there was nothing available to read.
Well, I don't think that's, if you requested that there was a memo dated June 25th, which I believe today was, from Latio Gore in regards to variances and things of that nature.
I actually did request it, and I left my telephone number, if anything came in late, I asked to be called. So I could be prepared.
Well, in fact, if that's the case, I apologize on behalf of the Town Manager's Office. You should have been, should have been given this information. Before I open it up to questions, let me just summarize, you're looking for two different variances. One variance is the name-brand variance. And I understand the scope of the variances you're looking for is that if Town Meeting were to define that, that particular name-brand variance, it would go away. The variance would go away. The other variance, again, you're looking for?
Section 184, section 30, I believe it is.
Which is for, the variance for?
That, that is the variance, the, under, according to the letter dated the 5th, the Building Commissioner has declared that beer is not a perishable food.
Okay, so on a sandwich board side, so you would meet the criteria of all the additional sandwich board?
Not asking for any other variance other than just that beer, perishable food.
All right. All right, just.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I clarify? I think there's only been one violation notice issued, and that was regarding the a sandwich board sign at this location. I don't believe any other violation notices have been issued for any other signs at this business location, merely the sandwich board alone. So I guess I just want to clarify that for the board.
And let me ask the question, and it's just for the sandwich board side? Does it say anything about the sandwich board? I don't have that one in this packet yet. Could you read that for us?
It refers to section 184-30D of the sign code, and, and the clarification that we received today from Building Commissioner Latio Gore was that this relates strictly to sandwich board advertising. And, so I guess I wanted to be, to clarify, if a variance is being asked for from this board for something for which a violation has not been issued, I want to be, caution the board on that. There's only been a notice issued for a violation of a sandwich board sign.
The June 5th does refer to both parts of the sign code violation. Your understanding is that Latio, that the enforcement is only going to be on the sandwich board?
Correct, that's my understanding.
Right, but, Mr. Gore, just let me finish the board. But Mr. Gore also does bring up, in fact, the name-brand.
Because that is on the sandwich board.
Right, so we're just talking about the sandwich board, but.
But some of the arguments relate to signs elsewhere on the business premises, which have not been cited as being in violation. So I just want to caution the board that that argument is only applying to the sandwich board based upon the fact that that is the only sign that has been noticed with a violation.
Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
I had been before the board before for a variance, before I even built my building. I don't come before the board only because violations have been issued. In that case, I didn't want to build big glass walls that have window signs, so I asked for a variance for a different type of sign, and it was granted. This evening, I'm before you because the Building Commissioner Latio Gore has stipulated that this section does apply to other than building signs, wall signs. There is nothing in the 14 or 15 pages of sign code bylaw that in any way indicates that this 184, section 10, only applies, as the administrator has said, to sandwich boards. 184, section 10, is a freestanding section of the bylaw. Once I have been notified of that, that these are not allowed, I have a perfectly legal sign out there that's interchangeable letters. If I put a brand name on it, I'm knowingly in violation because I have been so notified that 184, section 10, exists. And I'm sorry, I personally hate hip pocket bylaws. And what this is, this is a bylaw that's kept in the hip pocket. When I questioned, the question of perishable, the next letter I received was a hip pocket bylaw, and you get hit off the head with this section and also this. And this hip pocket bylaw isn't enforced anywhere else, hasn't been enforced anywhere else. But now you know it's here, and it is here. And there is nobody that has made a determination in any way, manner, manner, that it only applies to section 184-30. And I would like the administrator to somehow explain to me why this bylaw, it only applies to sandwich boards, to one section 430. I've read this several times, I can't understand that connection.
Pat? If I may, in the, in the memorandum from the Building Commissioner, he says.
That's the one I never received. Did you have a copy? I might be able to read.
He states that you currently have a permit for six signs. Four wall signs, two per a previous variance, of these six signs, two per a previous variance, two where no variance is required, and two freestanding signs. Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding.
That what you have now? So, the issue here is a sandwich board sign.
No, the issue, the issue we're talking about now.
No, excuse me, just let me finish. So what you're asking for is a variance related to a sandwich board sign, which you interchangeably use for products that are perishable under the definition of the bylaw, such as Gorillak Milk or Budweiser.
Yes, I use it for, I use it for Bean Town Coffee also.
And you use it for other things. But when you use it for a brand name, which is, or a name of a product that is, does not meet the definition of perishable under the bylaw, that's where the violation occurs, and that's where you are requesting a variance to be able to use that sandwich board to advertise Budweiser. Is that your understanding? Is that why you're here?
I consider it to be a perishable, and it is a food. I don't understand the intent. The, the second reason I am here is once I have been cited and been made aware of section 184-30, which has to do with brand names, that section of the bylaw does not only apply to sandwich boards, it applies to all signs in the community. Once I'm made aware of that, as Building Commissioner, I think the administrator is saying, well, I can ignore and use it on my other signs, my window signs, my freestanding signs, and I, and I can ignore the notice for those, and I only have to think about the notice for the sandwich board. There's nothing in the bylaw that says it applies to one or all, it applies to everything in the bylaw. It's a separate freestanding section. So I would just like to have an exemption so that when I change the sign to Big Game next week, I don't have to come back again. I've been at this four and a half years.
Right.
Mr. Gore does mention in his letter, June 5, 2012, to Mr. Anderson, he says, furthermore, the sign code 184-10 states that products shall be displayed only if that brand is, is the brand name issue. Da-da-da, you may wish to appeal this decision. It seems that we're here on both counts.
Just on the sandwich board issue, is this the sandwich board sign that we're talking about? Or is that, is there?
No, that's a permitted sign.
That's a permitted sign, has nothing to do with that.
No. But, but after this letter, I wouldn't be allowed to put a brand name on it, understand that?
Just, just a little institutional memory here. Again, a lot of this interpretations are subjective. We keep talking, once again, about what is perishable, but this is a hindsight definition because it's not actually in the bylaw. And I think that we need to charge the Design Review Committee, which I don't even know has a quorum because they have, they're one of the committees that have three or four vacancies right now. So, we need to charge the Design Review Committee to actually come up with a little bit more defined definition. In regard to the brand name, you know, sometimes you do things and then they, what you did evolves over the years. My first job out of, out of college, I worked for Anheuser-Busch, and I worked for them for some 14 years. And that is, in fact, how the brand name scenario came about. What we would do with the company, and this was a national policy, is we would pay, you're a brand new business, we would pay for your sign out front. Except we would take three-quarters of the sign with the Anheuser-Busch logos or our products, and that's what Pepsi did, that's what Coca-Cola did, and then we'd put Joe's Place on there. And that's what this remedy of the, of the brand name in the sign code bylaw was fixing. But now, it has evolved to fix, take other things, the interpretation. It's kind of like going around the campfire. When you say something, it gets, by the time it gets to the other end, it gets somewhere else. I think if we all looked at supermarkets, looked at everything, what a brand name is, we'd all understand that brand names are part of our life. It is everything we do day in and day out. And I think the Design Review Committee or the sign code bylaw addressed the idea of billboards when they changed the, in fact, the brand name scenario. But that's my personal interpretation. I think it's very reasonable to go to the Design Review Committee and ask them to make some changes on this and come back with a, with a warrant article for the spring or fall Town Meeting, and something to present to us that we would put forward. Again, they, they recommend that, but those are my two cents worth there. Go ahead, Pat.
But they only define perishable as applying to sandwich boards, not applying to a wall sign. I mean, according to the way I read this, you could, perishable only applies to the sandwich board that you put out front. You could put a brand name on the wall?
No, no, a brand name's under a different section of the bylaw.
Two separate.
I'm sorry, I don't mean brand, I meant, a brand name is under a different.
So a brand name is for everything. It's not just for sandwich boards.
It's for everything.
For everything.
But perishable is only for sandwich boards.
Right, for that specific.
And we're not talking about a sandwich board.
Yes, we are, that's all we're here for tonight is.
So we're talking about a sandwich board that advertises Budweiser?
Budweiser, but what Mr. Anderson is afraid of is now that he's been cited for the brand name on a sandwich board, that he would have to come in, come in to compliance with every sign on his property, meaning his window signs that happen to say Budweiser, because he's already been cited for a brand name violation. So.
Is it within our jurisdiction to actually even cover brand name signs wider than his building?
No, we're, we're, he's here tonight for him.
Right, I understand, I, I think I understand what he is asking, but I think he's also asking a bigger question, that the ideal situation would be, we as the board could say, until this is resolved, that bylaw is an abeyance because we want to get some direction. He was trying to be honest, and he says, if he understands the law, he should take down all those signs, as should 93 other stores in town. And he's saying, can the board do anything about this? I'm not sure we can.
Well, what we could do is we could issue a variance like he's saying this evening, and send to the Design Review Committee a letter and ask them to change these, these particular bylaws and bring them back to the board for presentation to Town Meeting. He's looking for a variance until that's changed, so.
If Town Meeting changes it and they want no Budweiser signs, I'd lose the variance and take it down.
Okay. I would have two motions then. My first motion would be, I would move that we not grant the variance for the sandwich board. I just don't think it fits the standard that Brent mentioned last time of undue hardship.
Hold on a minute. Anyone can ask, just FYI, anyone can ask for a sandwich board sign, if it meets the criteria, and he, that was my question to him. Does it meet all the criteria except the word perishable? And he has the definition, he's willing to make the sandwich board within the 15 feet.
I understand, but I think, I would move that we not sue, not grant the waiver in support of the Building Commissioner's determination of perishable.
I'm going to second that because I have a problem granting variances like this. Because once you grant one variance, it's only specific to one individual, and it doesn't deal with all the other people who have the same issue. If we grant Brian a variance, then anybody else would be coming in here. Maybe we should look at it a little bit differently. I don't know whether it's hold it in abeyance or have a brief moratorium until the Design Review Committee can come up with something that, that where they meet with some of the business owners and come up with something. But I, I'm not comfortable granting a variance because, as I agree with Brent, a variance has to be related to a hardship. And we've granted variances, people whose businesses are far enough away from the curb that people can drive by and not even see them. And we've granted a hardship to them to put a sandwich board out front so people know that they're even there because you wouldn't see that their business was there. I think we did that for a business on 28 over in T. Ticket for the first year because they had just started their business and no one knew they were there. So there, there was a clear hardship. I don't see this as really a hardship. I see it as a problem more than a hardship that needs to be addressed by the Design Review Committee. That's.
My, my, my point is that occasionally in government, you have to get the attention of folks. And the only way we're going to get this bylaw reviewed and get the attention to bring it forward is to create and to issue a variance that would in fact go away. That, that would be my intent, and that would get the attention. He's willing to allow that to go away based off of what Town Meeting says.
My second motion would be to grant the variance for the brand name sign, and, because I do want that issue to be resolved by the Design Review Committee. I think that there are two different issues and.
But the only, the only word, give you an illustration. The brand name, he can't even put, put on his sandwich board sign Gorillak Milk.
No, but he couldn't put it on his freestanding sign that changes letters.
But he should, did he? If, if it meets all of the criteria for a sandwich.
You have to read the whole bylaw, it's, it's 25 years of amendment after amendment, amendments to the amendments.
The freestanding sign that changes letters, you can, what I'm saying is, I will move variance on the brand name sign, and you could put Gorillak on that. That's not your sandwich board sign you're talking about.
The sandwich board sign, what I'm asking for is for the selectmen to give me a variance on the 184-10, excuse me, 30, because the present law states that the sign shall be advertised perishable goods for sale only, such as food goods. And I don't think either the Building Commissioner in this very belated memo that he gave to you, the letter to me, or any conversation or every other evidence here has in any way proved that beer is not a food. Now, at the last meeting I was at, the selectman, and I'm shocked that Selectman Flynn doesn't, doesn't like variances, we issued a variance for bait to be on a sandwich board under a bylaw that says it's for food, so I guess it's food for bass. You know, we're stretching it here. I've asked for a variance that will go away when this goes to Town Meeting just so we can get the issue resolved rather than dealing with it for another four and a half years.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. You have a motion in a second, so we're taking discussion, Brett?
You know, we were here last time, and I, I said it, and pun forgiven or whatnot, but we opened a can of worms, and, and Mr. Murphy, I agree.
It was bait.
I, I agree with you that sometimes we need to do things to get attention. And I must say that Mr. Anderson has twice now made some very eloquent and reasonable arguments. For years, I've, we've seen variances come before this board, and I've taken issue with the, the problems with the sign code. For every variance that we hear, I've no doubt there are probably many that never come before us, because somebody gets a letter from the Building Commissioner that says you're, you're in violation, and you can appeal this if you want, and people say, you know, I don't want to go through the trouble. know, I don't want to go through the trouble. The idea that it's a complaint-driven process is, and I can understand why, but it's also one that's ripe for abuse, because they're brand name signs in Stop &amp; Shop's window, and I doubt anybody's complaining about Stop &amp; Shop, and even if they did, do we really think that we would want to be on the front page of the Boston Globe, because our Building Commissioner is issuing violations to a multinational corporation? There's got to be some reasonable litmus test supplied, and I think the Sign Code doesn't do that. Point well taken, Mr. Anderson, worms are food now, but beer is not. The pilgrims brought beer with them on the, on the Mayflower, because it was a source of calories and a source of vitamin B. So, whatever I may have said in the past, folks, just forget about it, because I guess everything is different, and so it is tonight, I'm going to go along with these variance requests, because otherwise, nothing's going to change. I've been arguing the case for four years now that we shouldn't be passing these variances, but nobody's listening to me in that regard, so I guess I'll try the other tact and approve every variance that comes our way. And the last point I'd like to make is that the, the Design Review Committee, I don't know if they can meet, I don't know if they'd have a quorum, based on the number of individuals that we need to appoint to that, but Article Nine, Section C nine-nine of the Town Charter states that we shall appoint a bylaw revision committee on a, on a regular basis. We're a little overdue to do that, I think Mr. Braga has mentioned that. Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully request that in July, we advertise for and begin the process of appointing a bylaw revision committee. Certainly, the Sign Code is one area that's in desperate need of a review. There are some other parts of the bylaws which also need review, and I think when we talk about zoning changes, I don't, that may be under a separate section, because the Planning Board generally deals with that, but certainly there are opportunities and certainly work that, that could be done. So with that, thank you for your, your time, and Mr. Anderson, you have my support.
And we'll, we'll pick up that issue right after we finish, we have a motion in a second. Any other further discussion on Doug's motion?
Would he please state his motion again?
Actually, in deference to Mr. Putnam's points, which I think very well taken, I actually would prefer to withdraw my motion.
Okay. So, you're withdrawing a second then, or did you want to make another motion? The motion withdrawn, so are we looking to take any action, meaning Mr. Anderson has asked for variances on two separate counts? One is for, for the definition of the word perishable on his sandwich sign, and he's also asked for a variance for name brands on his sandwich sign and, i.e., on his property, advertising specific branded items. And those variances would have a sunset clause after they're taken up by town meeting. So.
Which town meeting? Any town meeting?
If and when they're ever changed, those two sections.
Yep.
Do we want, do you want one or separate motions?
Oh, it doesn't matter, I mean, we could address them both in one motion, that's fine with me.
Well, then I would make the motion that we define beer as a perishable product under one eight-four thirty, and that we grant.
One forty.
Sorry?
It was a ten or thirty, you're right.
One eighty-four thirty, and that we grant the variance for that, and that we grant the variance for Section one eight-four-ten.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion in a second on that. Any further comment from the board?
The only comment I would make is that I don't think that we're really in a position to define the, make that definition of perishable under the bylaw, just a comment.
So, we have a motion in a second. Any public comment, or do I dare? Come right up, sir.
Like you, Mr. Murphy, I have been in the beverage business, the brewery business with middle high life, and if you've ever had skunky beer, you know what perishable means. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, a motion in a second, any further public comment? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Post?
Post.
Okay. I just have it, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. In, in the effort of sharing power, and under my chairmanship, I would like to task Mr. Putnam for putting together the, the bylaw review scenario, and I think we can, actually, it's been something that David Bragger has been championing for a while, if both of these can work on that together, that would be a great way to move forward. And maybe we could take certain sections at a time, rather than accomplish the entire set of town bylaws. Maybe the first one would be in fact, to, to re, to come forward with a proposal to appoint a committee that would do the Sign Code bylaw first.
Yeah, I wanted to mention there are two distinct.
Right, right, okay.
And usually, the bylaws come under the purview of Town Council, but that's.
Town Council would be part of that committee in some form or fashion. Okay. Next up is a vote to authorize the use of twenty thousand dollars from the AFC mitigation funds to pay wastewater treatment facility groundwater discharge permit, appeal, related expenses. Mr. Sussa, do you want to explain this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members are in possession of a memorandum from our wastewater superintendent, Jerry Potamus, and Jerry indicates a request for an amount of twenty thousand dollars for various additional expenses related to the town's wastewater treatment plan appeal. The board will recall that in the past, several months ago, you authorized some funds to cover the cost of that appeal, recognizing that it had not yet been concluded. We've now essentially brought that to closure on the legal end, and we know that we have the need for some expenses in excess of fourteen thousand dollars beyond what has been authorized, and for which we would request the board's support for additional funding. Beyond that, we have some engineering-related expenses that we anticipated. Again, the total of the two, we do not think will exceed twenty thousand dollars. Jerry Potamus is here this evening, if there'd be any questions about nuances or details of those amounts, but otherwise, we would ask the board if you would so consider to cover this, as we do not believe it should be appropriately be a general fund expense.
Yes, Dave?
Just a general question. Julie, what was the current balance of that account, AFC money? You know?
I don't have that with me, but I think Mr. Potamus may, if I might have him come up, Selectman Braga and Mr. Chairman.
Jerry Potamus, based on a pretty good recollection, I think it's a little less than two million dollars, the AFC mitigation.
Thank you.
Okay. Any one have, want to make a motion?
I, I move that we authorize the town manager to, to use twenty thousand dollars from the AFC mitigation funds.
Give a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Yeah, I have it. Okay, next up is approved minutes of June the eleventh. I have one correction myself, on page two, this was, under the Anchor Ale House, one hundred David Straits, I'd like you to add that the applicant admitted violating his current license by.
Extending hours.
Extending his hours of entertainment to eleven-thirty.
Did he go to twelve-thirty, he said, or twelve-fifteen?
I thought he said eleven-thirty, but we could just leave it as admitted to violating his current license, okay.
Also, Mr. Chairman, under that same, under, is he the name Robert Cunha? The actual spelling is C-U-N-H-A. Okay.
Okay. Any other errors, omissions, corrections? Do I have a motion to approve?
I move approval of the minutes of June eleventh with those corrections.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? The ayes have it. Okay, next up is executive session minutes of June the eleventh, and this would be for not.
Not to release, Mr. Chairman.
I move approval of the minutes of executive session of June eleventh and not to release.
Motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? The ayes have it. Okay, this brings us to the summary of actions. We'll get on the list. I'd like to hold number one, proclamation, Falmouth Amateur Radio, we'll have, someone read that? Doug, do you want to read this one? Okay, will we get to that? Okay. Next would approve memorandum of understanding, Falmouth Commodores, approve request for one-day liquor license, I'll hold that, approve request for seven-day liquor licenses, Seaco Shores Association, six-thirty, seven-one, seven-four to seven-eight-twelve, we're going to hold that one. Approve request for special event, MBL Fourth of July Parade, approve request for wedding permit, Ted Pomp, Old Silver Beach, on six-thirty-twelve, approve request for Sunday entertainment license, Mashpee Open Og Powow on seven-one, approve request for one-day liquor license, Falmouth Artist Guild's fundraiser, I'll hold that, vote to accept donation of the Church of Messiah, number eleven, approve N-Star petition to install underground conduit at David Snick Road, and then number twelve, approve request for one-day liquor license, Falmouth Historical Society fundraiser, we'll hold that too, please. So, I'm looking for a motion for three, six, seven, eight, ten, and eleven?
Some move.
Motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? The ayes have it. Number one, approve request for a special event, Falmouth Fridays Artisan Market. Is the applicant here this evening, Tricia? Okay. How you doing? You want to tell us a little bit about your event and, and how many days it is?
I'd be happy to. So, I'm Trish Koziv, I'm from Katoit, and I'm here with Sue Zimmerman and Ed Goldberg from Falmouth. And this is the third year we've asked for permission to be at Marina Park to do a weekly artisan outdoor market on Fridays, hence the name Falmouth Fridays. And it's a very small little market, we have about twelve local artisans that come in, and it's been, you know, it's been wonderful, and we feel as though we're adding a lot of value to Falmouth, because we do a lot of marketing, social media, emails, whatever, we're bringing in quite a few customers to the Falmouth area that wouldn't normally be here, they're coming in to see us, and they go into town and shop and eat or whatever. And, and this year, we decided to do something a little bit different. We wanted to give something back to the town, so we've decided to donate a thousand dollars to the service center at the end of the season.
Okay. Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Certainly.
How many vendors do you have?
About anywhere from ten to fourteen, so we want to keep it small, so it's like a farmer's market.
And you call them local, how many are actually Falmouth?
Probably close to half are Falmouth, and the rest are on the Cape. So, we have Sandwich and Katoit and whatnot.
Okay.
Once in a while, we have a visiting person, I'll say, coming from off Cape, but I discourage that, I really want local people.
Okay. And you are a for-profit business?
We are, but this year, we're giving back all of it to the service center, because we do not, so I'm an artisan as well, and these two are artisans, so that's why we did it, because we wanted to do something, because we had customers in the area. We used to run a market called Mashpee Open Markets, some people might be familiar with, and that closed down, so we decided to do it here instead. So, all of the profits are going to go back to the town and the service center.
I mean, you're basically running this every Friday of the summer season.
I forgot, yeah, five, so five Fridays. We, we stop the Friday after the road race, because things, we went to the end of August the first year, and it got very quiet, so we don't go to the end of August anymore. So, we do all four Fridays in July, and then August thirteenth, because we never get permission for the road race Friday, so we just, we're not, we're not there on the road race. We'd love to be, so if you'd let us, we'd love it, but I, we understand that in the past, you've said no, because there's a lot more traffic coming into the town.
All right. Just a conversation to the board, I tend to have a little problem with things like this, that are every week, they become a business operation, and they compete with our local businesses who pay taxes, who employ our local folks. Granted, we do have artisans that create products here in town, but not only the fact does it put stress on our, our park, but it also takes away business from some of those merchants on Main Street that might sell all those same type of wares, those same type of crafts, those same type of artists, on a once-in-a-while type of basis. My personal opinion is I don't have a problem with it, but I often do hear merchants on Main Street that, that will, will say, you know, I'm competing against someone who's not paying for a light bill, who's not paying these type of scenarios, but I've opened it up to questions and answers from, questions from the board. Yep, Pat?
Well, you know, Heather and I have been meeting with the, with, with the Village Association, with Mark Silpharm, and, and with also people from the farmer's market. And I don't know why we couldn't expand those discussions, because it relates to the same thing that you're thinking of. And if you think that this, this is Marina Park.
I understand.
And, and they have concerns of, of the use of Marina, of Peg Noonan Park, because they're right across the street, they have their businesses, and sometimes if the same things are being sold at the market, it interferes with them. So, I would think that we would, I would suggest that we not deny them the permit this summer, but that we, we pay more attention to it, and as we meet with the Village Association, we bring this up, in the use of the various areas around town and how they might impact on, on businesses that are already there, rather than just saying, let's not do it this summer, but let's work it, work it out, and then see what we come up with for next year. It's a little late in the season.
I'm just, I'm going to let you respond.
Yeah, but, and also, August tenth, as you know, is not a possibility, that Saturday, isn't that road race weekend?
It's a Friday, but Helen Kennedy thought that there might be someone else who might be looking at using the park that day as well, a local group, so Helen's suggestion was that we do.
They could go the following week.
That go to eight-seventeen if we do do it, and not eight-ten.
And not eight-ten.
Right.
Right, and we would end on eight-three, I forgot, I made mistakes, we would end on eight-three.
You would end on eight-three?
We're only talking four Fridays.
So, you wouldn't go beyond.
So, it's five, it's four in July and August third.
You don't have the twenty, you don't have the twenty-seventh listed on your application.
Yeah, it's, it's the four consecutive Fridays in July and then August third.
But this actually says six-thirteen and twenty, and August third.
The twenty-seventh is not available?
Yeah, it says the twenty-seventh is not available on your application?
I haven't seen that, because I've.
Yeah, it's crossed out here.
It's crossed out.
I did cross it out, so somebody must have.
So, that, that is probably not available, so the date's available, July sixth, the thirteenth, the twentieth, and then August the third.
And I have a question, I just hate to be a stickler, your mailing address is Hopkinton, but you list that you're Katoit, is that you're a seller?
Right, and a summary address.
Are the other artisans, I mean, I guess I really like it being local, you're around people.
Sure.
That's my expectation, when we say it's local, not people who are here short-term is.
Right, it's a mixture. And I did get a phone call from someone who was from the merchants group we used to spoke with, because we originally asked to go to Peg Noonan, and they, she called me, and I'm sorry to write down her name, and she said, you know, we're going to, we're going to say to the selectmen, we're not interested in that, but we would be okay with you being at Marina Park. So, I apologize, I don't know who the person's name was, but she was very comfortable with that, and she said, if you go back to the same location, we're all right with that.
Who are the artisans, is, I mean, is it a group that is together already, or is this something?
No, they're just.
That we could invite people who are local artisans, saying it is available for local people to join in also?
Absolutely. It's not exclusive, so if somebody local wants to do it, they contact me, we have a website and a Facebook page, and then they send me an email or call me, and we're definitely open to that. So, it's not an exclusive little club that only certain people can do it.
And they, they pay a fee though?
Yes, yeah.
What's the pleasure of the board? Again, I think every week is, is kind of like a business, I've, you know, we have the Main Street Fair a few times, we have had it once a year, I mean, those type of events, but whatever the board decides. Go ahead, Brent.
Three Fridays in July, one Friday in August, it doesn't seem too excessive to me, to be honest with you.
Okay, so you'd like to make a motion to.
I'd make a motion that we approve the request for July sixth, thirteen, twenty, and August third.
Okay.
Second.
Motion in a second. Motion is second. And we would like to include you next year as we move forward with the talks?
Sure. I apologize, I wasn't here two weeks ago when this first came up, but I was told it was probably going to be, you know, not a rubber stamp, but it was our third year, so I apologize. Or I would have come the first time, so...
So, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close? All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Proclamation, Falmouth Amateur Radio Association. Doug, would you like to read that into the record?
Whereas the town of Falmouth has more than 150 licensed amateur radio operators who have demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing emergency radio communications. And whereas these amateur radio operators donate these services free of charge to the town in the interest of the citizens of the town as well as the world. And whereas these amateur radio operators are on alert for any emergency of Cape Cod and practice their communication skills during the American Radio Relay League Incorporated Field Day Exercise. And whereas this year's Field Day Exercise will take place on June 23rd and June 24th, 2012. And now therefore we, Kevin Murphy, Brent Putnam, Mary Pat Flynn, David Braga, and Doug Jones, as Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim week of June 18th to 24th, 2012 as Amateur Radio Week.
Some move.
There was a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it. Do you want to sign it and just bring it all back down? Next up is approve memorandum of understanding, Falmouth Commodores. Oh, we already did that, I'm sorry. Next up is approved request for one-day liquor license, High Field Hall. I held that just to give my disclosure that I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license.
I move approval.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close? The ayes have it. Okay. Next up is approved request for Sunday Ente... Nope, that was... One-day liquor license, Falmouth Artist Guild fundraiser. I'm just giving a disclosure that I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license? Do I have a motion?
I move the...
Falmouth Artist Guild.
Oh, Falmouth Artist Guild. I move approval.
Second.
Motion is a second.
If we get to the bottom.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it.
I think we skipped the Seaco Shores Association?
Yeah, Seaco Shores. What happened to that?
We did, geez, I'm sorry.
Number 5?
You skipped over that.
Yeah, we skipped over everything.
No, no, no. Number 5, approve request for seven one-day liquor licenses, Seaco Shores. Just my disclosure, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Do I have any other questions from the board? And I think some of our folks are here?
No, that's the artist. Oh, they are.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, some move.
And I'll second it.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it. Just for your information, there's a maximum on that of 30 in one year. Okay. Did I s...
We already did the...
High Field, we did. We did the other...
We did the Artist Guild.
And the last one, approve request for one-day liquor license, Falmouth Historical Society fundraiser. Just for my disclosure purposes, I'm not the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license.
Some move.
Motion. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Town Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little follow-up on the matter of the signs. I wanted to advise the board that, as you requested, I did work closely with Building Commissioner Ladio Gore over the past week in further clarifying sign enforcement-related issues which have recently arisen to the maximum extent that we can do from a staff standpoint. I know the board's talked about bylaw changes as well. Just to inform, on this past Thursday afternoon, I joined Ladio and our sign officer, Ali Fitzpatrick, as well as two members of the Design Review Committee for discussion with the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors on the sign enforcement process. It was a constructive and enlightening dialogue as explanations were provided regarding the interpretation of the existing sign code, and all parties agreed to continue to work together in communicating consistent information to town businesses. Also, as the board is aware, work is moving forward on the redraft of the Selectman's Five-Year Strategic Plan document. I do appreciate Heather Harper's great assistance in this regard, and I know late in the day-to-day, Heather forwarded an electronic version of a first redraft of that plan, and we welcome the board's review and our further work in that regard to that important document. Also, Wednesday, July 4th, brings with it a full schedule of community activities in Falmouth, working closely with Chief Rielo, Chief Sullivan, DPW Director Ray Jack, and ensuring adequate preparation for this important day of celebration. And as per usual, of course, Town Hall and related town offices will be closed on Wednesday, July 4th, for this Independence Day holiday. Members of the board, I want to thank Beach Commissioner Don Hofer, the Beach Committee, related support staff for their fine work in preparing the town's beaches for this season. Related to this, I want to thank Kathy and Cheryl, our colleagues in personnel, for their great assistance in preparing and processing literally the mountain of paperwork necessary to bring in the town's summer seasonal employees, not only for the beaches, but for the many other areas of parks, recreation, and public works. Also, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to advise the town clerk, Michael Palmer, and I were pleased to receive notification recently of a $10,000 voter educational grant to the town of Falmouth from Secretary of State Galvin's office. I've had discussions with Clerk Michael Palmer regarding voter education-related initiatives which we'll be undertaking with those grant funds to the town, and we'll be providing forthcoming details to the board and to the community as well. Also, the board will recall that we've been working diligently and have had a couple announcements about the long-awaited pedestrian and sidewalk improvements that lie on Catherine Lee Bates' road between the main library and Mullen Hall School. I want to provide a bit of an update on that, continuing with behind-the-scenes staff work on that with representatives of... Staff representatives of the library and the schools as well. I'm pleased to advise that initially, we had indicated that we thought we would lose six parking spaces in the public crosswalk to be created for public safety purposes between the library and the school. Happy to advise that with some additional engineering, utilizing the skills of our highly competent town engineer, Peter McConerty, we're only going to lose two parking spaces now rather than six. And we all recognize there's been some public concern with the highly-used on-street parking in those areas. We certainly were concerned about losing up to six parking spaces and reducing that from six to two and maintaining the incredibly important public safety improvement there. We're very pleased with that enhancement and that improvement. We'll also be adding some solar-powered school zone signs essentially along the lines that Selectman Bragg has referred to and that many of us have seen utilized in some other communities, which will also give notifications to the drivers of their own speed in the school zone area, which should help considerably with speed enforcement. We look forward to that. Those signs being posted at the beginning and the ending of the school zone there, which we will be creating. Also, we anticipate that some of that work, particularly the tree trimming and some additional tree planting and the modest tree removal that would have to occur there, would begin as early as the end of this week. Formal construction of the enhancement, the new sidewalk, the pedestrian crosswalk, and the new curbing would not begin until after the Downtown Arts Festival early in July, so the formal part of the project will begin later in July, and will be concluded well before the start of school. And we will have some... A map and a summary information in the exit and entry areas to the library and the location... Excuse me, in the entrance and exit, which are located on Catherine Lee Bates' road, so that patrons in that area during library hours can view those plans and be reminded of what our anticipated schedule is for that very, very important safety enhancement. And members of the board, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Do we have any individual selection reports?
I have a couple. I wanted to mention that the Cape Cod Commission has voted to send the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Report, which is otherwise known as the SENS, to Washington, to the Commerce Department, to the Economic Development Administration for Commerce. This is a five-year report, and it was so well-done the last time that the county received $65,000 in funds from Commerce to work with this. I have a hard copy of it. It's very thick, but it's also being sent electronically, and I think it would be really helpful to not only our EDIC, but the Economic Sustainability Subcommittee, as well as the town boards like planning and zoning. And it's just full of data that I think I mentioned before with regard to population, income across the Cape. Anyway, so that's out now. It's approved, and the documents, I'm sure, you'll find very useful. The other thing I wanted to mention was there was a piece, I think it was in the Cape Cod Times, it was written by Eric Turkington. And as you may know, that the Conservation Law Foundation, the Buzzers Bay Coalition have not been able to agree with EPA, Fed EPA, on a settlement regarding the lawsuit that they brought against the EPA. So, it is now going to trial. And because it's going to trial, that if the EPA were to prevail in that, the EPA can actually make rules regarding non-point source contamination as well as point source. And the object of those two determinations obviously would be all the residents of Cape Cod as opposed to municipalities. So, it would mean that if they do produce regulations, that individual homeowners, property owners, would have to comply with those. And because no one else is, say, as a party to the suit, there's been a discussion about whether or not the towns would want to become intervenors in this lawsuit. If you are an intervenor and you have status as an intervenor, then you can actually have some say in the decision and how that might affect you. Now, the Sandwich Water District and the Bourne Water District have expressed great concern about the lack of any of the municipalities or the residents being an intervenor. So, Gregor McGregor... Gregor McGregor, who is an attorney and in Boston, but he does a lot of work on the Cape. He has agreed... He has been in conversation with the Bourne and Sandwich Water Districts to determine whether or not there's any life to this concept of being an intervenor. So, the county has taken this up as well, the county commissioners, and because the Cape Cod Water Collaborative Executive Director, Andy Gottlieb, and the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission, Paul Nitzwicki, were both involved in the discussions originally with BBC, CLF, and EPA. And then they withdrew at some point when there was an agreement that they would try to reach a settlement. So, the county is also looking at the possibility of maybe contacting the towns and the towns, and not just the water districts, to see if there's any interest in the communities. Now, I've had some emails from people in the town who read the article by Eric, who is agreeing that, yes, towns should consider whether or not they want to be intervenors. So, I'm just laying out the information on this right now, but it's something that we, as a board, should really think about as a community, as to whether or not there's any real purpose here and whether it would be important to do that, so...
And in regard to that, Eric did send me an email, asked us... Asked if we would consider intervening. I discussed it with Julian, and he is working with Town Council to see if, in fact, that's something that they want to recommend to the board or not recommend to the board.
Well, and I think, yes, and we should know what other communities are doing, too, and I think the county can bring that information back, and you know what other towns are thinking. And probably the managers' meeting, that might come up as well.
So, it's on their radar screen, and they're working on it to bring it back to the board.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Any other selection reports?
I just want to make an announcement. The Board of Selectmen will not be meeting next Tuesday, the 2nd of July. We will have... We're going to have a little break. We're going to have one short meeting on the 9th that will only cover one topic, which would be the year-end bills. There was an area where we had five spots in that month, and typically, we would not have been meeting, but we'll be meeting on the 9th at 6:00 for a short one issue item to go through, the year-end bills as well. So, the next time, we'll have a full meeting of the board, would be on the 16th of July. Okay. A motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it, thank you.